All right, welcome. Thank you for joining us on this work session. The first item of business is Cultural Trail Design Discussion with the Maryland Stadium Authority.
So, good afternoon. Here with Al Tyler from the Maryland Stadium Authority and wanted to talk about the stadium construction and the impact that it's had on the cultural trail and how the trail is being relocated around the stadium. And up on the screen is pretty much the latest rendering that the stadium authority has come up with for the stadium layout itself. And you'll notice that sort of reddish purplish line on the, starts at the bottom center of the image and then bends to the left and then makes its way back up to Baltimore Street. That is what is proposed for the relocation of the cultural trail. So, when this first came up, when the stadium really started to, you know, move into conceptual design and we realized that there was going to be a property transaction between the city and that the cultural trail was part of it was going to have to be relocated, the city entered into an MOU with the Maryland Stadium Authority that laid out the terms of how, how the trail would be relocated and how it was going to fit in with the new stadium. And as part of that, I think the agreement is attached to my memo, but I think the key thing is that, at the end of the day, the trail needs to be a continuous path basically around the stadium so that we don't have any breaks in the cultural trail. And it's supposed to look like the cultural trail that was there before, same materials, sort of same design, that sort of thing. So originally, well, I shouldn't say originally, I'd say until earlier this year, the portion of the trail, once it hits Baltimore Street, the original plan was that it was going to bend to the right and run parallel with Baltimore Street down to the existing crosswalk that's by the mural of unusual size. And I think as the design has evolved and stadium authority has been looking at, trying to make things work on that Baltimore Street side of the stadium, came to realize that there were going to be some difficulties in running the trail down to that existing crosswalk location. They have a loading dock on that side of the stadium that, at times it was going to be difficult to keep the trail open if there's, if there are vehicles there loading or unloading. And I think that the stadium authority is also looking for a place, a pull-off area basically for buses or larger vehicles that are coming to the stadium, a place that they could pull off. And I think that they've been able to create room for that along that portion of Baltimore Street, but that was another hindrance on trying to keep the trail running down through there. So I think that the plan now is, or what's being proposed, is that the trail will come down to Baltimore Street and we're going to relocate the crosswalk so that instead of being down at its original location, it's going to be up closer to Potomac Towers at their entrance. And then the section of trail that's out there now, and Eric, if you could switch to the Google Street View, the section of sidewalk or trail that's out there now, you can see it's just a regular concrete sidewalk running down toward the mural of unusual size. All of that sidewalk would be replaced with the same brick pavers that we're using on the cultural trail. So we're going to try to make it look as much like the rest of the trail as possible in that section from, from there up to the new crosswalk location.
What part are you talking about turning into brick?
On the left-hand side, the concrete sidewalk that runs in front of the Housing Authority property.
That's not sidewalk. You're talking about the entrance to the Hagerstown Housing Authority.
That's the entrance, yeah, but there is concrete sidewalk there and then it continues toward Potomac Street from that point. And that's the sidewalk that we would want to replace with the brick pavers.
So you're talking about bringing the trail, it would have to cross the Housing Authority's entrance.
Driveway, the apron there.
Right. And probably what we would do is similar to what was done down at Chick's Seafood is we would probably cut the concrete out, cut a width out, the width of the trail, and put bricks in there and use a special type of sand to help seal those bricks in place. So that you're gonna, you're not going to be walking across concrete, you're going to be walking on pavers the entire length. So there's not going to be a break where you're crossing that driveway.
So you're basically going to cross at the bottom of the screen, straight across, and then pave the whole way down to the cultural trail.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you say the bottom of the screen, that appears to be different than what you show in the picture. In other words, it's further down than that. It's not, it's not near that ADA pad. It's actually further down than that.
It is. It's, it's up close to where Air's alley comes through.
Yeah, to where the alley is. Well, that's not on his picture. So that's why I said bottom of the screen.
Right. Eric, if you can, if you can rotate that. Yeah, there we go.
So how far up are you talking about? Because there's two entrances there. I see the one you just panned away from and then the second one into the Housing Authority. So there's two crossings. Are we talking about one crossing or two crossings?
I think we're talking about one crossing and it would be at that utility pole that is closest to it, which is at the entrance, the other entrance into Potomac Towers. So I'm envisioning it would be sort of a diagonal crosswalk like the existing crosswalk is, cutting it across the street from that landing, that curb ramp that's here now by the utility pole over to, across Baltimore Street to hook up with the portion of the trail that's on the stadium side. So I guess that's what's, that's what is being considered at this point.
Can we go back to the first picture?
Sure. Actually, Eric, can you go back to the first exhibit?
Yeah, to the picture. There you go. Okay.
So you can see that there along Baltimore Street, the trail hits, hits Baltimore Street on either side of the street, but there's a gap there that is, right now is concrete sidewalk. And it's that, that piece in between the two red sections.
And we just want to make it continuous.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Like we did down at Chick's.
Can we talk about the rest of it? So I understand what you're saying about the crossing. What about the rest of it?
Like the artwork.
So, yeah, I guess, so here's what you presented in May of 2021, right?
That was the concept.
This was this picture. It was the four concepts and all four concepts had this presentation. That's what the mayor and council received. And it had sort of all the artworks that's going to be reincorporated into the project.
Into the trail.
Right. Okay. Well, here's, here's the field, right?
Yeah, but I, I feel like I know where you're going with this, right?
I'm just curious how we got from here to the black fence.
That's a concept diagram, right? So between that diagram and today, as, as we started to get into the project and do the project, right? It was necessary to come up with a negotiated memorandum of understanding, which we did with the city, Rodney and I quite honestly did. And as things started to lay out, it was discovered or realized that the size of the existing right sculpture was such that it really wasn't going to fit on the site, or it doesn't fit on the site appropriately after the stadium's constructed and the field design and then the cultural trail is, is incorporated in that. So as part of that MOU, the state is responsible for reimbursing the city for the removal and the relocation of the sculpture, which is envisioned to be someplace else on the trail.
The sculpture. I mean, that's just a piece of that part. So I'm just curious. So this is May of '21. This is where, and I think we were all excited at the table. It's all going to be incorporated and, you know, passersby will get to see, you know, sort of what this is going to look like. And then this is July of '22, right? This is, this is a year later and this is, this is a further iteration and you see this sort of big swath of area that comes through.
Of the site.
And, and it shows, you know, different sort of design features and places where cultural trail arts components are going to be re-injected
Yep.
into the site. And that was July of '22. And so this was sort of the last iteration that we had. And we've been told, you know, you're still in design and, and then this was a late, this was part of that later iteration. And then, now the first thing I saw was in April where it has the yellow picture and the trail sort of sitting outside. And then I see the presentation that was provided about two months ago, about a month ago now, to the Greater Hagerstown Committee where there is basically a black wrought iron fence that will run the entire length.
Yep.
And so the trail is literally a 10-foot wide sidewalk that will run outside of the event center and will be shielded by this tall, black sort of wrought iron fence that a passerby won't be able to see in to the area. That's, I mean, that was part of the presentation that was made at that meeting, when I reviewed that meeting discussion. So I'm just trying to figure out where the cultural trail components that were presented through that two-year process, where they're going to go now.
So the existing, the existing amenities, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. I, I think the existing amenities and maybe that feature scape that we were sort of, given the impression that was going to happen.
So the city, before we started as part of our MOU, the city came in and removed any of the things that, that they wanted, which were the furnitures and fixtures along the, along the trail, benches, signage, like posts, the sculpture, obviously. That's in, that's in their possession right now. Part of our agreement is that, is that those elements get reincorporated back along the trail as they fit and as they're necessary. With respect to the fence, as we started to, well, a couple of things, right? So that first picture you, you showed represents, I forget exactly how much it was. Was it a $50,000 or $75,000 high-level conceptual effort? What's on the screen here is, is a $3 million design and engineering effort, right? So that apples and oranges completely. So as we started getting into the MOU, certain things started to, started to bubble up and come to light. Things like needing to have access to and rights to be able to take care of certain things by the city and, and the team, right? So certainly the stormwater line, there's an easement for that. We had to negotiate that, when that would be shut down and how that would be worked out. The other thing was being able to keep the cultural trail open consistently throughout the year, even if there are events taking place. So as part of that original concept that was bouncing around between the city and the consultants and things and being able to incorporate, a key item that, that came out quickly was how to maintain public safety and security for non-event goers as well as event attendees, as well as how's that trail stay open during an event, right? A concert, a baseball game, or what it might be. So, and who's responsible and who's liable for that year-round? And as those discussions started to take place, that's when it was discovered that, that the trail needs to be separate and maintained separate and then provided back or transferred back at the end of our project, back to the city. So right now it's under our control. Once the project's done, it will revert back. That property will be conveyed back to the, to the city for maintenance responsibility, all, all that original responsibility. So essentially that, that existing trail was bumped further down closer to the, to the alley. But, but as we started getting into those conversations, that's how things started to morph.
Yeah, I guess my curiosity is, is like when I look at that picture and I see that big like shaded area that, that I had this impression was going to be incorporated into the project, that's all gone.
Well, that went away with the conversation of what happens to that area when there's a baseball game?
Mm-hmm.
And the answer to that question was quickly, it gets shut down. And that was not desirable from the city's perspective of, of shutting, shutting down and reopening the cultural trail. The other part of that is starts to get into maintenance and liability, right? So the city has a, let's say the city has a, has an event that uses that trail. That's also part of the stadium. I don't know, something happens, that, that trail gets damaged to the point where it needs to be shut down, then you can't have an event in the stadium, or vice versa, right? So if something happens during a, during a concert, right, tractor trailer comes through there, damages that, something happens, then that trail is shut down indefinitely until that gets fixed. So th- those were all scenarios that started to bubble in those conversations that went into final considerations and final designs of being able to separate those two items, the facility and the, and the trail, and being able to transfer the trail back to the city.
So I don't know that I have a huge, I don't know what the, the word, I'm not really married to, you know, to that, except that I like to have clarity that the cultural trail is being excluded from the project now. Like, you know what I mean? Like, that to me, I think, is, is important because, like, for me, I think for two and a half years, I've been sold on this idea in my head that that wasn't going to be the case. So I think it's good for me to understand that, like,
What do you mean excluded?
Well, could, well, you've got this huge black fence. It goes the whole length of it. And so even in the meeting that, with Greater Hagerstown, the consultant clearly states, you might be able to see, I can be paraphrasing, you might be able to see into the field if you've got really good eyesight and can squint through, through the rails.
It's a wrought iron fence. It's
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Than walking down Utah Street, right? So that, that, that's another good, so Utah Street, you know where Camden Yards, the warehouse is? Oriole Park, the warehouse, Camden Yards. Utah Street is technically a street that gets closed off there. But there's a wrought iron fence, right? So today you could ride downtown, they're not home today, but you, you could theoretically ride downtown and look through the fence if you wanted to look through the fence. It's, it's not like a windscreen, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
So, and I don't think this is a question for you, but as it applies to the agreement that, that, that we set out between the city and MSA and our obligations for the bond that we secured to construct that public improvement, I want to make sure, and I think this is probably for me the key, that, that, you know, we don't have the land now. We don't have the appurtenances in place where they were. I think this is a question for Michelle. You know, I want to make sure that we are in good standing.
Align with that, yep.
Yeah, for, for that bond because now we don't have, you know, $2 million worth of the stuff
No, you're absolutely right.
That we spent money to put there.
And as we started to negotiate that MOU, those were, those were deep conversations about tax-exempt money needs to be used for tax-exempt purposes. The profile of the trail needs to be, and a lot of that language made it into this agreement of how the trail needs to be reconstructed. The length of the trail, you know, needs to be put back in, I forget the term, but, you know, in, in one continuous line. Our bond counsel and your bond, or the city's bond counsel worked pretty closely on that and our attorneys all worked pretty closely on that to make sure that we didn't have the scenario that you were, that you're describing.
So is what being, is what is being proposed now consistent with our understanding of our certainty in meeting those obligations in what we thought
Yep.
was going to happen then?
I think so. I mean, the, the point about the length of the trail, the relocation of the trail, I think is going to end up making the trail longer than it was before. So we're going to have more square footage, I think is how they put it in, in the agreement. But I think there's going to be more trail at the end of this than when we started.
Okay. And then what happens to the appurtenances that we retained? So there was an impression when folks traversed that area before that it had a, you know, artistic context to it. Whereas now it has a very linear, static, almost sidewalk-like context to it. How will that be? I don't know what the right word is.
Compensated for?
Well, it's just like, yeah, like, you know, it had a feel. Now it has a different feel. What measures are going to be taken now that these measures clearly aren't going to happen? What measures are going to be taken to accommodate the continuation of the field that was there before?
We'll continue to work with the city, right? A big thing that it's not the same space. Because I don't know, that it's not the same amount of space to create the same space, right?
Oh, yeah.
So we jammed everything, everything back to be up and fine for, for the baseball field. So continue to work with the city to make decisions on how and what can be reintroduced in that, in that part of the, part of the, part of the trail. That may, that may turn councilmen a lot into, and I'm not, and we're not responsible for this, right? So you guys, you guys are and we're coordinating with you, but like the other part of the trail that's, that's down here towards Antietam Street with the, the cultural signs and the, and the information and things at the fence location as well. But I, I'm not, I don't, I don't make those decisions. We will incorporate what we can in coordination with the city as appropriate.
So, and I apologize, I'm not, as many as I probably should be with this particular space. But I guess my curiosity was sort of the trail sort of came through here and, and, you know, came out. I'm just curious, is this a separate? And I'm pointing to the square, that's sort of that empty segment where the trail is now going to outlet toward Antietam. Like, is there, yeah, the big, the big white space, I guess.
This white space up here?
Like, who owns that? Is that, is that to be like reincorporated as part of it to, to, to
Part of that's the Antietam paper, part of that's the Antietam paper building.
Right.
It just doesn't show on here. So that's the Antietam paper building. And this is the existing trail. We're not, we're not, we're not touching this part down. That's not part of the, part of the project.
Okay. So that's going to stay the same as it is now, which is the viewing of, of that cultural entity on the left.
The faces, yeah.
And before that, with the continuation of the trail now through the Housing Authority's frontage, I guess, or, you know, on, on the street side, who will administer that relocation and construction process?
Well, I think that's going to end up being a city project, a city contractor to do that, to actually do the work.
Okay.
And paid for by the state.
To reimburse, reimbursed by MSA specifically?
Yeah.
As part of this project?
Okay.
I think they have, Al, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've got limitations on where work can be performed and where your contractor can be.
We can't go outside of our limits of disservice.
But you can compensate the city if the city takes on that work itself.
But part of the relocation of the trail is contemplated by the memorandum of understanding. It, it's the, it's the same as the, as the sculpture.
Okay.
We contemplated that.
And understanding now that what will occur down the, the first baseline is what, I mean, let, let's be honest, was, was generally, you know, envisioned from the outset here for the access and, and the building. And, you know, I think that was spoken about very early on and then considered, you know, something different and then, and we're back to this. And so how do you envision that? Or would you envision any limitations on access at that particular point as it applies to public safety and security situations for that? Because my understanding is you've got loading and unloading, you know, to make sure that when we talk about continuation, if you're going to shove everything to, to, to the south side of the street for a longer period because of the access, security circumstances on the north side of the street where you have the trucks, you know, for concerts and things, loading and unloading, how will that area be secured? In other words, will the trucks sit outside of the stadium? Is there, will there be additional fencing there? Will it require additional, what I'll call, public safety measures to be implemented when the trucks are at that location? Because I'm thinking of larger trucks that are going to have to turn back in, you know what I mean, into that space. So is that going to disrupt activity even by putting the trail on the south side of the street in that particular area when you have trucks that have to make those maneuvers for those events?
That's an operational conversation. So that would be with the, you know, the, the event promoter, the concert promoter, whoever it may be. That would, so public safety, access logistics and all that stuff would be an operational issue. Is anything being built in at that crossing, the proposed crossing for pedestrian crossing, any kind of pedestrian safety light or anything like that?
It's, yeah, the, the pedestrian safety beacons that are at the existing crosswalk are going to move up to that new location.
Yeah, I think that's important because, you know, right now you have basically a mid-block crossing that was at an intersection and now you're moving it into that, you know, 150-foot range from an adjoining intersection, not at a mid-block, you know, crossing, which is, you know,
Right.
Yeah, you're right about that.
You don't want the track, you don't want the crosswalk where a tractor trailer is going to be delivering food supplies or whatever.
Right.
Right.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, what that's going to look like in the field as it applies to the necessity for vehicles of that size that are going to have to access those areas, you know, during those events.
I think, I mean, Al's right, it is an operational thing. I think the trucks coming in are probably, they are going to be coming at a different time than, I mean, the trucks that we're talking about at, at that loading dock are more to serve the food service and that sort of stuff. Bigger trucks, like you would have for a concert, if you're bringing in, you know, roadies with equipment, they actually, I believe, are accessing, they, they're going to be driving along the cultural trail through a gate into, inside the fence sort of at the, at the right field area.
Okay. So my last question maybe as it applies to that activity. You say it's an operational or an in-the-field thing. Obviously, I guess I envisioned in my head, you know, whomever is, is, is here when all of this begins, when I hear public safety, I hear, you know, Hagerstown Police Department, you know, Hagerstown Fire Department. Those city public, so, safety entities would be likely involved in, in, in those operational discussions. Is, is that going to be with MSA? That would be with
That's a, that's a local chief as the owner, operator of the facility. So that would be a chief responsibility.
Okay. So once you guys, and maybe I've seen understanding clear, so once you guys finish building it.
Yes, sir.
You're going to hand the keys over and the ownership over and say, now it's yours, city.
Operating.
You need to, to negotiate or, or, you know, discuss with those private entities that operational
That is correct. That is
MSA will no longer be involved.
Right.
And you will not retain ownership of the property or, or the facility or anything of, of that nature.
Not operations. We, through, through the, we issued bonds, right? So while the bonds are outstanding, technically the state has ownership, partial ownership.
Okay.
But we do not have operational responsibility. So, so we have, we have quiet and peaceful ownership. You guys have full operations.
You guys meeting chief, the private.
Chief, the, the local, the local.
Right, not the city.
It's, our, my key's going to go to the fellow at chief.
Okay. So maybe that begs the last, our question from that. So maybe that begs the last, uh, uh, question from that, um, because you, you're saying MSA will retain basically ownership, silent ownership.
While the bonds are outstanding, technically state taxpayers are.
So as the state pays down those bonds over time, once the state pays that off, then, then you'll be fully out.
That's correct.
So, okay, so regardless of which private entity i- is handed to, uh, to, to own and operate and maintain, let's say that that doesn't, uh, or let's say that that, 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 um, is transferred through the course of that bond payment repayment period. Does that mean that you would come back in and you would, you would negotiate with, with whoever chief may transfer that to if it becomes another, you know, operation?
So as part of the agreements and statutorily, that's not, it's not as easy as just putting a for-sale sign.
Okay.
On the front door. Yeah, that's, no, because that, that would have to be blessed by bond counsel. It would have to be blessed by the Board of Public Works, um, so that, that there, there would be a process for that. It's just, it wouldn't be as easy as just putting that in a paper and selling.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's going to be our responsibility, just so everybody knows, watching, to figure out where we're going to replace that art along that trail, uh, to make it very pleasant, flowing, all that stuff.
But not the art that was removed?
Yeah, because I saw it.
You said the art, right, the art won't fit because the space has been.
Well, 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 not in that space, but.
Somewhere in the city.
Somewhere.
Somewhere on the trail, which, which the project is paying for.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, the artist, the artist came in and removed and the, and the artist will reinstall.
Right.
Just not back in that same location because it doesn't.
Right.
It doesn't fit there.
And they are doing some things to, um, sort of continue at least some of the character of the trail, um, using the same pavers, they're using the same light fixtures, those tall skinny cigarette lights. They're going to have those along that section of the relocated trail. So there'll be some elements that look the same as the rest of the trail. But the, the artwork, um, the Ross sculpture, there just is not going to be space in that area to reinstall it. So we're going to have to look, uh, once the city comes back into ownership of that land, then I think we can look for opportunities to maybe have some other artwork there.
Yeah. But the fence, from the fence end is chief's, including the fence.
Yes.
Yeah. So we're still going to have those tall cigarette.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, those tall, there's already been some add.
That looks very, very eerie when it's foggy, yeah.
Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
And I'll just say, between Al.
Not so much, Al.
Matt and John have been great to work with in this whole thing, very, but no, Al, Al, of course. The cog, the cog that runs the machine.
He is.
Thank you guys very much.
Up to work. Thanks.
All right, next up is the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts Expansion Project Update. We've got Jill Thompson and Sarah Hill, Executive Director.
Paul, that's what I said. Would you say Hill? Not Paul. We need to find the source.
Hi, everybody. I wanted to take a moment to introduce our new director of development, Elizabeth Smith, goes by Beth, and hopefully everybody's going to see her around and get opportunities to work with her. Um, thanks for inviting me today. Thank you, Jill. So Jill saw me present at a chamber event back in May and had some follow-up questions, which led to me being here today. And some of you know more about what we're doing at the museum and some of you may not know much at all. So I've wrapped some backstory and some, uh, mission in with this as well. So I often use this slide to start talking about the museum because it absolutely drives me crazy. This is a Baltimore Sun headline from the spring of nineteen thirty-two, and it's the word worthy that really bothers me because every single person is worthy of a great art museum. We're indeed fortunate and, and the people of this community know they're fortunate. And I feel that every day of my job, the weight of the responsibility I have towards a community that loves its museum so much and knows that it's special. And one of the things that this project does is it acknowledges the fact that our treasures can't just stay the same. So here in Hagerstown with the Renaissance that's bubbling up, with the medical school, the stadium, and, um, other activities that are happening, if the museum stays the same, then it's that, that old-fashioned museum over there in the park. Um, we need to, to keep pace with the theater and the library and our other cultural organizations to remain a community leader. So this project is really all about generational transformation of the museum. And, uh, interspersed here, and you guys will have time to read through this material because some of it's wordy and fills things in, but interspersed here are some, some mission moments and our founders here who, um, really were ahead of the curve in terms of understanding the way art can transform lives. These are just some, some images of beloved collection objects. And of course Diana, um, who may be the goddess of the hunt for most people, but here in Hagerstown, she's the goddess of the lake. Everyone associates her with City Park and the museum. Um, we are, um, yeah, some of these quotes come, came from a staff, a work session we did on our most compelling, uh, cases for support. How do we bring people to the museum? How do we convince people to support the museum? And, uh, so in addition to being a place of beauty and refuge, museums are also places of challenge and, and places where thoughts are provoked and places where minds are open and people learn different things. And, uh, the Joseph Holston Exhibition I put in here, um, that was a contemporary Maryland artist who, uh, did a series of paintings imagining, um, Africa, life in Africa through captivity, through escape on the Underground Railroad. And, uh, people were incredibly moved by that show, um, you know, the, the guest book showed, people were in tears. So, um, we really do, what we do is, um, extremely impactful in, in many, many ways. Here's a Dutch artist that we had come and talk about things, different ways of looking at the world and provoking ideas. Uh, one of my favorite museum stories has to do with this exhibition, Alur of the Near East, where, uh, uh, we, we talk about bringing the world to Hagerstown. For this show, a man, uh, with his two daughters ended up calling his mom in India because he was so moved by a copy of the Bhagavad Gita we had on display. So sometimes we think we're bringing something new to town and we're just connecting with our neighbors. So anyway, evolution of the museum, um, many of you have been here and lived through changes in the museum. Um, and, and the bottom right there is our current configuration with the last, um, addition, that green-roofed U shape, uh, that created our atrium in nineteen ninety-four. Um, one thing about that, uh, that particular expansion is that it planned for two classrooms and one was never used as a classroom. It was co-opted almost immediately for office space. So even that generational transformation of the museum back in nineteen ninety-four didn't really serve all of the museum's needs. We were still left with constraints. And so we ended up, um, deciding, uh, sooner than I expected. You know, I came here during the pandemic. I didn't expect to be under pressure to expand the museum quite, quite as quickly. But certain, uh, circumstances of the community caused the conversations to begin in earnest. And I said, well, let's do this really thoughtfully. So we brought in, um, Schwartz Silver, our Boston-based architects who specialize in museums, libraries and archives. And they let us through a master planning process. So that was completed in February of twenty-two, so maybe sixteen, seventeen months ago. Um, we completed the master plan. And what the master plan looked at was constraints on our abilities to do our job and constraints on our abilities to serve the public. So this is kind of just a baseline here of the museum, what, what we have right now. Um, and I will say that in terms of attendance, um, we were about forty-six thousand a year pre-pandemic. Of course, the pandemic, um, you know, attendance really dropped. But between fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, which we just finished, it went up twenty-six percent and we were, I think, three people short of forty thousand. So we were, are well on our way to getting back to our pre-pandemic attendance. And, um, you can see about visitation there, um, two-thirds of our visitors being from Maryland, one-third from out of state, about half from Washington County. So part of this master planning process included, uh, a market examination, um, you know, we, we're all used to saying if they build it, if we build it, they will come. And sometimes I think that is true and inspirational, but we wanted somebody to tell us, yes, they would come. So we got, uh, a company, ConsultiCon, came in and did, uh, market analysis for us and, um, looked at our visitation. That blue line is actually the sixty-minute drive time and that is, that's sort of my dream. I think particularly the north and the east are, are the west sides of that blue line. People that are further away from DC, we're the easiest and wonderful, high-quality museum that they can get to. Um, and all of those people should know about us and be visiting us. Um, and they looked at Hagerstown as a hub for tourism and, uh, you know, day trips and, uh, the fact that we are uniquely positioned to take advantage of, uh, this, one point one million residents in that footprint, eighty-six percent of them are outside of Washington County. So that's a huge potential visitor pool for us. And, and to be frank, it's a, it's a visitor pool that is more, in quotes, qualified to be museum visitors. They tend to have a little more income and higher education and be folks that are more likely to visit museums. So, um, we, we're looking for those people. And this is again, uh, there's, there, we don't really have, there's nobody else like us. You know, we, we're always talking about, uh, we were just, just on TripAdvisor as the fourth best museum in the state of Maryland, um, and I think the, the first one outside of Baltimore on the list. And there, there's not much competition out there in terms of quality of collection and quality of program. And I often bring up, um, the Shenandoah Valley Museum, which has about five times our budget and endowment and gets about the same visitation. So we are a, and I don't like calling us a small museum anymore. We're, we're like knocking on the door of medium. Maybe, maybe large eventually, but, you know, we, we do Herculean and, and really impressive work with, with the, the staff and the budget we have. So going through the, the planning, um, and we began looking at, and to be honest with you at the time, that the conversations arose out of the stadium and the Herald Mail building being vacant. And so we initially started looking at the Herald Mail building and where else could we go? And then somebody mentioned, oh, there's that, um, former Bach Oil site that's had a for-sale sign on it for ages, right by the Hager House. And nothing could be more ideal really in terms of, uh, an opportunity for the museum because it's the right scale, it's, uh, it becomes, it allows us to create a campus. It just became very obvious as we went through and started looking at, um, possibilities for expansion that that site was the right place. And of course, we bought it a year ago and, uh, Tiara and Shelley came and visited it. Just, uh, we didn't, we didn't own it yet, but we had a group from City Council come down. I think Rodney was there and, um, Mayor Keller, when she was mayor, and, 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 uh, Keisha was there as well. So some folks have gotten a tour, um, of the space. But anyway, you can see it's just a couple of minute walk from the, the museum to, uh, the Key Street site. If we're, if we have school groups that we're hosting, there can be a school bus sort of pull-over in front of Key Street to allow kids off, off the bus there. Um, it's really where we see, so when we talk about constraints on the building, and there's a footprint there, um, there are some things, you know, I mentioned classrooms and staff space. And so we, the, the idea is we can, excuse me, move the teaching function and the classes over to the Key Street site. We can have classrooms there, we can have education administration there. And that allows, that frees up some space in the main building for additional office space. But we also want to serve our visitors. So we're talking about increasing our temporary exhibition space, increasing our space for welcoming visitors. So it is not just, um, Key Street, but we're looking at doing work at both sites. So, um, doing a addition to our Grow Gallery, some of you don't, probably don't know the galleries by name, but that's where, um, that's our largest temporary gallery. It's where the Public School Show is every year. Um, if we increase the size of that, we can start taking, um, creating, curating and bringing in larger exhibitions. So that's about twenty-three hundred square feet now, which is nice size. But to do a show that might drive regional tourism, we really need like four thousand to five thousand square feet. So the idea is that we can do more impactful exhibitions and help drive tourism. And also, um, we can, we can only, because of the historic building, we can only sort of work on those two sides of the building and everything we do has to be, um, you know, approved by the Maryland Historic Trust. So we're looking at moving out toward the parking lot, creating a more welcoming, larger lobby. If you've ever been inside the museum, as people start flooding in, it, it gets busy. You can be there talking to someone and then somebody shows up with deliveries for the bridal shower Saturday and then a school group comes in. So we really need a little breathing space there in the front. And it also, a new lobby also creates potential for more event space. So if people have a dinner in the atrium, they can use the lobby for reception area. And I, I will say that this is all conceptual design. We have not gone through schematic design yet, so things may not quite look like what you're seeing in these. But there are some conceptual renderings of what it would look like to have, uh, more expanded lobby. Our shop, it's also, our shop is tiny and if you were in a wheelchair, you would have a heck of a time in there, like there's barely enough room to, to go in. So accessibility is a big part of this project as well. Um, we can, uh, by relocating the entrance, we can create a flat entrance. So, um, we don't have to have people go down that long ramp that we have right now. And just moving along a little quickly through some of these renderings. And then the Key Street site, which is really, you know, it, it is about, uh, education. It's about community engagement. Um, we will have, uh, a larger meeting room there. Right now, if we pull together our full board and our advisors, we cram into our little library with, with two, two rows of seats, or we go in our atrium, which has poor acoustics. So we need, uh, a meeting room for about forty people. And that would also be available for community use. So if companies want to come do a half-day retreat or get away, um, and talk to their staff, it, it allows for some flexibility for other people when we are not, we're, we're not using that space. But, um, I'm going to pull up, this, that this one diagram sort of tells you everything, um, labels things. There's a cute little pump house there where we could put a kiln. Right now, we can't do ceramics because it would be dangerous to our collection. But over at Key Street, we can do ceramics. Um, we are talking about that garage, um, being a space for, uh, brown bag lunches for school kids. Um, right now, they're, you know, either eating in the classroom or in our atrium, or if the weather's nice, they run out to the park. But then, you know, we, we, we can still only, we can't do much juggling. This allows us to be able to host more kids. I could say this whole project's about saying yes. So often it's, we get a phone call and, you know, it's a Boy Scout troop or if it's a, a senior group and our spaces are full. And so we want to be able to say yes more. Um, that second floor is all education space. That main building is about eleven thousand square feet. We have also talked about, you'll see, again, it's conceptual rendering, but we've talked a lot about the beauty of the museum and how when you drive by at night, you see, you know, the lake lit up and you can see Diana and the rotunda and how, how, just how lovely that is. And how that corner between, you know, Hager House and, uh, the Belly Art Association is there. We kind of connect and create a fuller arts campus. And we wanted to do something there, um, that would brighten that corner. So right now, we've kind of created this glass entry vestibule that would be kind of like a lantern on the building and, and very inviting for people. And the stables is a really interesting building where I think the first floor is particularly accommodating for contemporary art projects, for the kind of things that maybe don't work so well in a beautiful, refined gallery like we have at the main building. And, uh, there has been, so all of this really comes out of strategic planning that really precedes me even being in Hagerstown. And there's been a dream of having an artist residency that really fits with our founders and the way they, um, supported and patronized artists. And so we were thinking the second floor would be an apartment for an artist residence and, uh, that that residency would include things like working with local schoolchildren and a lot of community collaborating. And, uh, moving along here, you can, you can look at a lot of these details yourself, but, um, we're really excited. I know Jill had some particular questions that she emailed me that started this. Um, between the, um, addition to the museum and the renovations at Key Street, it's, uh, it's more than seventeen thousand square feet of additional space for us. And, uh, we see, again, a lot, we see Key Street as being very programmatic and very community-driven. It's about drop-in activities for kids on the weekends. It's about offering more classes. I always say, you know, I don't say no to birthday parties. There are museum people who think, you know, it's beneath them. But I think, let's bring them in and give them an activity and talk to them about the museum and then they can have cake. That's absolutely fine. So it's about more possibilities for programming and community engagement. Um, and that, that's, uh, the, the party I fantasize about going to, um, at night in the new facility. When, hopefully we'll all be there having a glass of champagne together in a few years. Um, a few, a few things about sort of where we are now. So this was master planning, conceptual design, market analysis. Um, we are in sort of campaign planning phases now. So we. So we had a campaign study in January and February. Our consultants did 73 community interviews to sort of test the waters for our capacity to fundraise to a project of this scale. We are really optimistic we can do this and we think the project is probably about an $18 million project, about nine million for each piece of it. And, you know, if we, if we're gangbusters, if we get this campaign launched this fall and everybody is really enthusiastic, you might see some activity happening by late 2024, early 2025 in terms of timeline. But I'm happy to hear your questions. And, you know, I could talk about this forever. I'm losing my voice now. So if there are other venues or other places you would like me to go and speak or to people to talk to, tell me. I'm just a dog and pony show.
Well, I know that we all support the museum, so, you know, we look forward to seeing this come to fruition and let us know that we can do to assist and who we can appoint you to maybe in the future get their buy-in to. Have you presented this to the county yet?
So they have, yeah, they have, they've been in, at the site, some of them have toured the site. And when we did our annual lunch with them this year, they heard where we were in March. So we were at the very preliminary campaign planning phase yet. But I know everybody's very concerned about economic development and the impact. And, and we're working on an operational plan right now to project our revenues. I mean, it's, it's an interesting thing. We're a free museum, right? And that allowed us to weather the pandemic really well. Museums that charge a gate fee really suffered. We have a pretty diverse revenue stream between state, city, county, private philanthropy. So, and also, obviously, there was COVID help. So all of that really helped us stay really strong. But we do want to develop revenue. You know, we, we need to continue growing and keeping pace, as I said, and giving people the kind of experience they expect from a museum. You know, one of our consultants used the word, this makes you a modern museum. We do need to, to deliver what visitors expect. And that said, it's reminding me, lots of people ask about a cafe. We do not have a cafe planned into this, except that there are potential locations where we could add one if, if we, you know, if in a few years we decide to do it, or if we go gangbusters, or if one of our funders out there says, hey, I really want a cafe. So, yeah.
I think that, and I apologize, I wasn't able to participate in touring the building. But like for me, I mean, I obviously spent a good bit of time growing up in the South End, very familiar with this property, you know, as a kid, you know, playing in the area. And it definitely just makes all the sense in the world as we've extended the parking to the museum and the museum has sort of extended itself over time in that direction, you know, for this to become this type of product and added to, you know, to your venue space. It reminds me a little bit, and I know that some of my fellow members probably won't see it the same, but I'm really into water and sewer operations, right? And so, wait, wait, wait a second. So, but when we toured the, the, the water plant down at the Potomac, one of the most striking things of that tour was the historic industrial architecture of that building. We were just like, wow, you know, we can't believe, you know, that this type of structure was built, you know, in that time period and how like clean and, and, and cool and active the space was. And I guess I just look at this building and I just have to envision in my mind, even though I didn't take the tour, that this probably has some really cool industrial space to it that lends itself to exactly the art type of venue spaces you see in larger cities. And so I think that that first statement in there, I think echoes what this building could be. And so I, I just think it's a really cool.
Yeah, I, I, I will say, I sometimes, when I'm feeling really ambitious, I call it Mini Mass Mocha, if people are at all familiar with the Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art, which is a series of industrial buildings that have been given over to, you know, really ambitious art projects. But we can, you know, and I see the residency is not just being visual, visual artists. Maybe we invite a dancer in, maybe a writer, really activating the space. And I, and I have a sort of, you know, along with the expansion, there's a staff growth plan. And one of the things is somebody who is all about community engagement, working to make sure that those artists that we bring in or the things we do with contemporary art work with the community and invite other people to collaborate with us. So it's, it's really exciting.
I will tell you, I mean, we got my children, you know, my oldest, you know, she just has expressed, she doesn't have a big interest in going to college and she is an amazing, you know, in, in, you know, those contemporary arts of functional, you know, artistic expression, you know, clothing and sculpture things. And so I, I think that, you know, we need more of those spaces that lend themselves to that functional, I don't know, design education or, or hands-on, like when you, like when you talk about the kiln and things like that stuff, to me, is really cool stuff. Not because I do it, but because I see that there's clearly, you know, a segment of student population that are geared, you know, way more toward that than, than another five years.
Sarah's top, even what you're referring to is called industrial chic.
We call it industrial chic, yeah. And, and our strategic plan actually, you know, for those people, I love the historic museum building as well, but our strategic plan actually said, you know, we need a place that will be attractive to younger audiences and feel hipper. And this is a really nice yin and yang, I think, the contrast between the two places. And, and there are quite a number of museums that function with multiple buildings and campus settings, so it doesn't scare me.
I appreciate that because as we grow, you know, the art community needs to grow. And I don't know if you guys have been to the Frick, but it's amazing. So I'm excited to see that you guys have that architect.
Well, and I worked there.
Did you?
Yes.
Shelley, anything from you?
No, I think it's fantastic. I've been following the project since it tours, so I'm.
And do, you know, if you, if you come, if you have ideas for me, if there are people you think I should meet, you know, if people I should meet, ways that I can, you know, support my case, strengthen it, let me know.
What was that term you used again? Because I want to use it.
Industrial chic.
Yeah.
Industrial chic. That's you.
I'll bet it's taller than that tonight.
Well, you know, the immersive Van Gogh people have gone bankrupt. This is, there, there is a meaning to this story. And I have had people over the last couple of years keep saying to me, can you bring immersive Van Gogh to Hagerstown? It's like, it's not really art, right? And I have said, when we open Key Street, I want to commission someone to have some kind of fantastic immersive experience in Key Street that's about our history and about our community and is, is unique to us. So we, we have that to look forward to.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for listening to me because I truly, I go long all the time. I can talk forever.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the preliminary agenda review. Please stop me. It's a new two.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Tekeisha, Mayor Martinez will call a meeting order next week, invocation. Matthew, you doing the invocation?
Sure.
Pledge the flag and the announcements. I will have some appointments at Hagerstown Youth Council Partner Group numbers, Hagerstown Housing Authority, and Historic District Commission. We'll have a proclamation to get me not month. I will have citizen comments, and you can still email your comments in the councilcomments@hagerstownnd.org no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 22nd. We have the minutes of July 11th, 18th, and the 25th. Under the consent agenda, we have engineering, a 2023 Ford Escape from Keystone Ford, $33,750. Hagerstown Health City Garage Construction Inspection and Testing, Triad Engineering, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland, $36,571, 32. Potomac and Baltimore Intersection Design, KCI Technologies, Inc., Sparks, Maryland, $55,012. Information Technology, ESRI, GIS, Software Renewal, Redlands, California, $39,700. Police Department, the annual software maintenance agreement for police mobile, Keystone Public Safety, Inc., Maple Shade, New Jersey, $114,998. We have body armor, Atlantic Tactical, New Cumberland, PA, $16,746, 66. Ammunition, Gun Shop, Vincentown, New Jersey, $33,256, 71. Open container exemption for Porch Fest. Under Public Works, Emergency Repairs Boiler, Beaver Creek, I'm sorry, Beaver Mechanical Contractors, Inc., Hagerstown, Maryland, $13,200. And a 2024 Four Broncos Board material to be presented on August 15th.
So this is what the amount is, $31,200?
$31,200 for that. And utilities, light, under light, flame-resistant clothing, blanket contract, cousin footwear, Bexville, Bexville, Ohio, $23,000. Water wastewater aggregates, Stone, Martin Marietta, Wingsport, Maryland, $85,690. Water wastewater aggregates, asphalt, C. William Hetzer, Hagerstown, Maryland, $24,925. Water pump station, three peerless pumps, Schaefer Trucks, Oh How, Inc., Frederick, Maryland, $38,100. Wastewater, WWTP Dumpster Service, Republic Services, Hagerstown, $13,141.80. Wastewater Pelletizer Facility Operations Contract, New England Fertilizer Company, North Quincy, Massachusetts, $1,100, or 200, this was this one here, right? $1,200.
You've got two separate ones for the, so this one should be presented.
Okay, all right. $1,169 and $110. Under wastewater pelletzer facility, asset management, capital, materials to be presented, which is what you've got for $1,200,000. On our new business, we have the approval resolution funding for the summer camp, approval resolution contract with Payback Phone Technologies, Inc., approval resolution, Washington County Historical Society Addendum to loan agreements, approval and agreement between the Hagerstown Eastern Paint Handle Metropolitan Planning Organization and the City of Hagerstown to fund Hagerstown SS4A Action Plan, approval of funding for advanced metering infrastructure, approval for grant Chesapeake Bay Trust, and approval for trash and recycling contract. Then we'll have our fantastic city ministry construction and then mayor and council comments. And then we'll adjourn. Any questions? Okay. Moving on, an update, the reallocation of summer camp funding.
Okay, I'm just coming back from our conversation last week regarding the reallocation of summer camp funding. The two projects we landed on or spoke about was some additional funding in the park, in the Recreation Department for the Horace Toadham and funding towards the summer basketball camp. We came back with a recommendation for $5,000 to remain in the Rec Department and $10,000 for the, towards the summer league, which would go through the Beyond New York Foundation and the money would be exclusively for the basketball camp. Now, again, you can change or adjust that how you want, but that's a recommendation at this point.
I'm recusing myself in discussion due to my affiliation with Beyond New York Foundation and Summer Basketball League.
Okay, cool. I'm fine with it.
I'm totally fine with it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Proposed 2023 Land Management Code amendments, the second package, Part D.
Good afternoon.
Steve.
Doing well, thank you. We're back in a little sooner than we typically are. We processed a package earlier this year, which went into effect a few weeks ago, but a couple of issues came up that were, that were time-sensitive. So we decided to move forward with a second package this year. And since we had other issues that were in the to-be-dealt-with pile, we figured we'd just handle it all at one time and hopefully we, we put off our next package for another six months or so downrange. So what we have for you, which will go to a public hearing in the end of September, is a package of 10 amendments to the Land Management Code, mostly to the zoning ordinance that deals with a number of things. Most of it's clarifications and corrections, but there is some in the way of new content. And I'll go over them with you briefly, item by item. The first one, issue 2023-05, is adjusting the open space requirements and NMU housing mixed percentages in the NMU zoning district. We passed some regulations on those in the last package because there is a, one large NMU zone site in the city that is a greenfield that is being eyeed for development. And at the time, we realized that the way the zoning was set up, somebody was just going to do a huge garden-style apartment complex on the site. And the thought was, if that's not the appropriate use for that area or the intent of the zoning district. So some mixes were required as far as the housing types go. Since then, a developer is looking very seriously at this and they're looking to do with the mixed-use type project, however, they felt that the numbers that we adopted didn't quite work, wasn't consistent with other mixed-use developments. They did, they showed us the numbers and it made sense. So Planning Commission is moving forward. That also updates the open space requirements in the NMU district. It's basically, the NMU district is becoming a little bit more regulated than it previously was before. It was almost, pretty much a blank, blank slate. You could almost do anything you wanted with it. But now this is just setting a little bit in the way of design expectations. Number 2023-06 is a clarification and exemption to nonconformity for certain dwellings. This was, this is a housekeeping item in discussion with the city attorney. We thought this was prudent. The city was appealed on a zoning violation notice a few months ago, and they took a rather creative, in our opinion, interpretation of this particular provision in an attempt to defeat the zoning violation notice. We were successful in defending the ordinance. The violation notice upheld, but we thought some clarification was in order. This is a provision that basically allows non-conforming two-family dwellings and townhouses that were specifically built as such to return to those uses regardless of whether or not the property that they sit on meets current lot area and setback, lot area and lot width requirements. But it has to be built that way, not retrofitted. But city attorney and staff agreed that some minor adjustments to clarify that were in order. Number 07, minor adjustments to the motor vehicle sales facility design standards. This is actually a pretty successful, relatively recent provision in our ordinance, but we found that we did have a little bit of a hole in it that we're plugging. Basically, if you have an existing motor vehicle sales facility that might not meet these standards, but then you're adding new uses to the site, you're intensifying, it now triggers the requirement that the new expanded use be reviewed for those criteria as well. Number eight, minor adjustments to the use of vending machines and ATMs as a principal permitted use. We received an inquiry from someone who wanted to put a vending machine in their front yard in a residential zoning district. That is not permitted, so that wasn't a particular issue, but it did cause us to look at the ordinance a little bit closer. And then we realized that in mixed-use zoning districts, the CCMU and NMU, you could have a house or an institutional use and somebody, there's nothing that would prevent somebody from doing that.
Well, I think it really all depends on what it was going to be stopped with, right?
I'm not going to go there.
What?
So, so this is tightening the CCMU and the NMU up just a little bit. So those properties that are improved with dwellings and institutional uses, they cannot do principal use vending on the property. You can still do it, though, on properties that are used for commercial or industrial use or mixed use. The next one would be number nine, parking requirements for new assembly uses in existing buildings. The city has never, on my watch and prior to my watch, when somebody proposes a new permitted use in a zoning district in an existing building, we've never reviewed zoning ordinance in such a way where the new use has to comply with current parking requirements. Just because the city is so old, you'd probably be very angry at me as the people's representatives for denying zoning certificates left and right because a lot of the buildings predate our current zoning requirements for parking. And it's never been a problem, except recently we did find a way where it could be a problem, and that was somebody was proposing to do a nightclub in a strip shopping center building that had almost no parking. So if this nightclub was successful, it would crater the parking in the surrounding streets. So this provision does require that if you're installing a new So this provision does require that if you're installing a new, basically a public assembly use, it's listed about half a dozen particular ones, in an existing building, even if it's a use permitted by right, you have to comply with the parking requirements. Now, compliance could also mean going to the Board of Zoning Appeals and getting a variance, you're not precluded from that process, but you at least have to address the process.
Yeah, if there was parking within a reasonable distance.
Yeah, that it doesn't, you know, is there public parking? What's the circumstances? Again, each property would be dealt with on an individual basis. And in general, the way the, the status quo has been for the last, at least twenty years since I've been here, and Debbie was zoning administrator for, what, twenty years prior to me, it's really never really been a problem.
Right.
But something on a rare occasion like this could be, just because they, the use could drive so much use at one time, and if the existing property already is below the current standards, it could create a real problem for the neighborhood. So then, those particular cases, the property, the use would have to comply with parking requirements, which, as I also said, could also include getting a variance. Issue number ten, Revisions to Article Four, Section M on Nonconforming Uses and Section U Board of Zoning Appeals, Including Procedures and Review Standards. Our ordinance has always been rather peculiar when it comes to the dealing of, dealing with nonconforming uses and how you approve expanding them or changing them. There's odd language in the ordinance that says that they should be treated like a special exception, and it, I've never seen that used anywhere else, but in, also at the same time, for the most part, it hadn't been an issue, except until recently, we had an example where we couldn't quite figure out whether or not it was an actual special exception or nonconforming use just by the peculiar, peculiarity of the use. So I went in and I was attempting to clarify that, when I realized that the structure that we have is basically the structure that goes back to the nineteen-seventy-seven ordinance, never really worked well, so basically, I couldn't just tweak it, so I had to pull it apart and clarify, these are the standards for a special exception, these are standards for expanding a nonconforming use, these are the standards for changing a nonconforming use. Nothing content-wise is really changing, the processes and changing the standards aren't, it's just clarifying and making it clear to all parties involved in how that, how it go. It also clarifies some overly restricted language in our ordinance, talks about certain advertising requirements that exceed state law. All we're gonna, all we're putting in the ordinance is that it has to comply with state law, if we want to have by policy more stringent, like, advertising requirements or whatever, we can do that, but if for some reason we were to miss that, it doesn't create a fatal flaw in the noncompliance with the ordinance, so we're just basically making, and we did that on another provision also recently, we thought we should do that here as well. Number eleven, Codify Parking Requirements for Child Daycare Centers. The, we have a list on our parking requirements of uses and how many parking spaces that are required when you're building them, and if it's not on that list, and the list isn't all that long, then it refers me as zoning administrator to what's called the ITE Manual for Parking Generation, and I make an interpretation of the ordinance based on the content of that manual. Daycare centers are pretty common, we thought it would be a good clarifier to add what the parking requirement is, and we use basically the middle of a few examples that, that we found out there as official adopted ones, so that way, people can just go to the ordinance and see what's the parking requirements for daycare rather than having to ask me to pull out that manual. Number twelve, Creatibility to Maintain a Pre-approved Inventory of Street Names. One of the fine, things that we find is one of the frustrating parts of our subdivision process is, somebody, you're going through the process of getting approval of street names for a subdivision, goes through multiple agencies, not just within the city government, and what this does is it creates the enabling legislation essentially to allow us to explore with the county and other agencies whether or not we could get preapprovals, have a standing list that, names that are reserved, and if a developer wants to pick from that list, then a lot of that work is already done. If they still want to go through the process to propose names of their own, they're still welcome to do that, too. It widens options and creates streamlining of the process if they choose to take advantage of it. Number thirteen, Except Mostly Decorative Banners from Sign Regulations. The, what this is mostly geared towards is mostly institutional uses, but it could be commercial ones as well, whereas if you have banners that you have around the outside of a facility, and they're mostly just decorative, they got flowers, they got artistic patterns, whatever, they shouldn't be counted towards sign requirements, as long as their branding is not more than a certain percentage of the actual banner itself. That way, it gets a kind of, a gray area out of, and a point of contention out of a point of contention, and just allows them to move forward. So a banner, if it had the, your logo, or, I believe there's two other things, that are not more than forty percent of the overall size of the banner, you're just exempt. But if you start getting bigger than that, you're starting to become a sign, so. Number fourteen, Permit CL District Uses in Commercial Spaces in Existing Mixed-Use Buildings in the RO District by Special Exception. Throughout the RO District, there are a number of mixed-use buildings that were built that way, where they basically had a corner store built into the first floor, and it's usually, like, they have a dozen apartments upstairs, you see these kind of, like, around the fairgrounds and such, but they are kind of scattered here and now, here and there throughout the district. And the thought is, is if the CL District is supposed to, is a very low-intensity commercial zoning district, what does it hurt to allow one of those uses in one of these corner store spaces? So what this does is, does allow for things, because right now in the RO, you can't do, like, a corner store or things like that, it's very limited, very, a limited number of office space-type uses in the RO. This will allow flexibility in existing grandfather, essentially, mixed-use buildings to have some more flexibility on the commercial uses of that, obviously, designed commercial space that they have on the first floor, which they currently don't have, so it loosens things up a bit there. And then, number fifteen is just a simple correction of an overlooked remnant from a passed amendment. So that's what we have, like I said, mostly it's just clarification, loosening of certain things, tightening a couple others, but that'll go to the public hearing, and Planning Commission moved this forward, recommended approval of all, all these items in this package.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? I do, I'm not right now. What happened, Steve?
Thank you.
All right. Local Conversion District overlay in NMU, twenty-twenty-one dash M one. Joanna?
Hello.
Welcome.
All right. I'm here to present the Local Conversion District Overlay Amendment. This one is at four Cypress Street, which is at the corner of Cypress and Potomac Avenue. This amend, this overlay was approved on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and back then, that application allowed the applicant to add a parking lot, have a one-dwelling unit, and expand the permitted commercial uses for office space. Now they're seeking to amend the application to construct in addition to the front of their building. The addition would enclose the existing staircase outside, add hallway space, and add a patient restroom. The overlay would also be altered, sorry, this would also amend the overlay to alter the use of the second floor into storage space rather than a dwelling unit. The requirements for the local conversion district would also still be met with the changes. With the recent Land Management Code amendments with version three-point-ten, it directly impacts this amendment. The text amendment lessened the restrictions on building additions in the local conversion district, so now this amendment is allowed and permitted. The Planning Commission held a public review meeting at the end of July and received comments from the Littles, from eight Cypress Street. They specifically said that they were not opposed to the overlay, but had some concerns with the neighboring property on six Cypress Street, which doesn't actually impact this amendment at all, and the Planning Commission reviewed this last week and recommends approval for this amendment. The next steps would be to hold a public hearing on September twenty-sixth. That's all I have.
Thanks, Joanna.
Any questions for going? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Advanced Medium Infrastructure Deployment Plan. Sounds like we're going to war.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for having us again this evening. Follow-up from our conversation a few weeks ago, we put together a tentative plan, there'll be a lot of moving parts, and things could change as, as we go through all this. So based off of our anticipated schedule, we sort of laid out some bullet points on the memo provided this evening. We'll start with customer awareness, we'll develop some pamphlets and mailers and flyers to provide to customers, to educate them, where they know where the utility stops, where the customer's infrastructure begins, provide some pictures, and some degraded equipment and so forth, so maybe they'll be proactive and take care of some of the things before we get into the weeds of this whole thing. We'll also need to file with the Maryland Public Service Commission. As our regulatory authority, they'll, they'll need to be aware of our intentions, and they may prescribe other orders or directives for us to follow as we go through this. We hope by the fall of twenty-four, all the equipment will be, well, not all of it, but maybe a portion of it will be in place enough to begin a pilot program. And while we're performing, and once the pilot program is, is underway, taking under consideration some of the thoughts of yours from, from a few weeks ago, we'll develop an RFQ and send out to electricians to do basic repairs to meter sockets. By basic repairs, I mean just the jaws within the socket, if they're burned up, if they're loose, and so forth. We'll take every, any means necessary to temporarily make any repairs necessary, you know, to give the customer enough time to reach out to an electrician and so forth to schedule those repairs, but let's see here, what, and, what else do I have? And then, of course, as I mentioned, funding sources. We'll work with finance and the community block grant folks to help out any customers If, if there's any funding available, we anticipate there will be, as this project is underway. Do you have anything there?
I'm sure there'll be some questions.
So that's, are basically out of the plan. If you have any questions, we're here to respond.
I can add a little bit to Nathan mentioning, we reached out to electricians, so we contacted some electrical contractors to ask if we issued an RFQ to say, would you give preferential pricing to X amount of customers through the City of Hagerstown? If we called you and said, there are fifty meter sockets that need work, could we provide your information if you're chosen through the RFQ, or multiple electricians chosen through the RFQ, for these customers to contact for those repairs? So any customers that have malfunctioning equipment don't have to go through all that legwork, we've already done that legwork for them. So all they would have to do, we would provide them with a list of contacts, they reach out, and they handle everything on their own, as they would now. If we're out during the day, changing a meter now, we notice a problem, we notify the customer, and it's their responsibility to take care of their equipment. This would just take out some of that legwork for them, and as Nathan mentioned towards the end, if they would qualify for CDBG funding, or any other type of funding source we can find to assist them with their own equipment, we would provide that information to them to allow them to recoup some of that, those dollars they would have to spend to fix their equipment.
Were the electric, were the electric contractors receptive to?
Yes.
Being partner and?
There were some, some were concerned with the, you know, each job's going to be unique, so that's why we're limiting to just the repairs, the jaw repairs. And I failed to mention earlier, I did also speak with the permits office, they are allowing us the ability to approve that repair.
Okay.
So that'll take the permit part out of it.
We wouldn't overload their department.
And, right.
And wouldn't have to make the customer wait for an inspection to occur on that repair.
Right. And will there be like a fee, like a permitting application fee or anything like that?
For a repair of just meter jaws inside the socket, no, as long as the socket or anything else doesn't need to be changed, you just pull the guts out, put new in.
Okay.
No, no fees.
And that's primarily what you're going to see with folks when you do this upgrade, correct?
We, that's what we anticipate.
Now, there will be, you know, you're going to find
Sure.
A place in town where, that, Kristen, you mentioned last time with the service entrance cable coming down to the meter socket, you know, the sheath being off of that, and it degraded, you're going to find a few of those, but hopefully through the education program before this program starts, people can be like, oh, I probably should do some maintenance on my stuff before they come along, so I'm not left without service, or have to incur those costs at a later date.
So on page two, the first bullet point, it says, HLD staff will determine if temporary measures can be taken to restore service, and provide notice for corrective action to be taken with any reasonable timeline. That's what you're referring to. My only concern is the word "taken to restore service." Does this mean that, because when the consultant was here, or the vendor was here at the last meeting, I got the impression that, you know, they want to move along through the segments as you identify them and, and, you know, make those changeouts occur. That bullet point, point, I want to make sure that I understand, is not to imply that there could be instances where they go in, put the new thing in, and service is disrupted until that person takes that corrective action. Is that what that, is that what you're saying?
No, I would say that sometimes, and we come across, across that quite often, the customer calls a million night, they're, they have power in their house, we go up half the meter sockets, or
Or rust out.
If we can't make any repairs temporarily until we get someone out there, the corrective action needs to be made immediately.
Okay. Okay. But it won't be as a result of the meter installation?
Right, it won't be, so if the contractor's out, they, they inspect everything, everything looks okay, they pull the meter off, and everything, everything, surprised by what's inside, they're going to give us a call, we're not going to put anything back in, under that condition.
Okay.
Any more questions? Anybody? Keep us updated.
We'll do, thank you.
Thank you.
City Minister.
So got a chance to attend the MML Cannabis Symposium last week at the Cowburn House. We had Kathy Marr as a panelist on the land use policy related to cannabis and the ability to invite dispensaries, processors, growers into communities. We're very fortunate in that planning was very proactive in that effort, and we are way ahead of the game when it comes to having those established requirements down, not only for that, but also for the, where you can put a business, whether, you know, not in the downtown, relating that more towards where you can smoke a cigarette or a cigar in a public, in a public space. So we were, I think we're positioned very well, and Kathy was inundated with folks afterwards, wanting some more information, so I thought that went very well. Also, Washington County has put out their draft comp plan for twenty-forty, it is on their website, but I also have copies of it, if any of you would like to take a look at, I think it's going to be very important, staff has already started to review it, but I think it's very important that you all take a look at it. We will come back to you probably in September with some, with some of our thoughts on, on comments that should be made during the public comment period on that plan, because I think it's going to be a very important document as far as it relates to future development in the county, and also our involvement in that, so we'll, we'll have that for you in September. Tomorrow night, midweek music and market, five to eight, University Plaza, Fast Eddie and the Slow Pokes will be performing, and Thursday night in the Hub City Brewery Lot, from three to six, is Farmer's Market, twenty-five-plus vendors, again, that's Thursday evening, five, or three to six. Tomorrow night's five to eight in Plaza, three to six in the Market Lot, and then Saturday is the hip-hop anniversary performances, that's in University Plaza as well. I do not remember the times, but I think it starts in the afternoon, like at noon or something. Oh, four? Get there early then. Get there early then. If you get there at noon, you're there early. That's it for me. Thank you.
Matt?
I know.
Chris? Here. So, don't forget August Toberfest this weekend also at the Ag Center. Enjoy that. And we're joined.
That what?
I'm waiting for my daughter to sit in the car.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Hello and welcome to Council Rap. I'm Wes Decker, joined today by a couple of members of the Hagerstown Light Department. Got Nathan Freidinger, who is the Deputy Director of Electric Operations, and Jason Bakedall, the Electrical Engineering Manager. And here to talk about the exciting topic of advanced metering infrastructure deployment and that plan, which, which you got to bring back before mayor and council for a second time earlier. Nathan, take me through this a little bit, kind of lay the groundwork for what this is. It's something that in, in some circles, it's a little difficult to nail down exactly what it is, but at the same time, it's really pretty simple as it relates to metering.
Right, so as you know, all of our customers have electric revenue meter on their house. We read it every month, we do that manually for purposes of billing. There's, we do have to, every year, we have to perform annual statistical sampling per the Maryland Public Service Commission. And we're finding that a lot of those meters are failing. And right now, there are 16% of our meters slated for replacement. They need to come off the system. And we feel that now is the best opportunity to move to an automated system, an advanced metering system. The advanced meters will talk to one another, it will talk, they will go back to the repeater, which will come back to the, to the Hagerstown Light Department office, providing read data in real time. And that will assist our, our billing office. Our, it will, it'll reduce the need for repeated visits to the meters by our meter readers and, and hopefully improve our, our customer service. Our customer service reps will have access to the data while they're on the phone with the customer to hopefully talk through any high bill or complaints and so forth, so.
Jason, what will this mean specifically for the customer? What benefits, I guess, will the customer realize from this potential upgrade?
Sure. One thing they'll notice is they won't see us in their yard every month. You know, they don't have to put their dog away, worry about us coming in the yard to read their meter. As Nathan mentioned, and it's kind of a buzzword, customer service, but it's true. So when the meter has no power due to a power outage, it will tell us that. So we will know the customer's out of service. So they don't, they still should, but they won't need to call us and tell us, hey, I'm out of power. We will already know that. And it will make our restoration of service process much smoother. Right now, it's still a manual process, just as is reading the meters. So we will be able to speed up our restoration process and manage that process much better. Also with read accuracy, you know, meters are read by people, people make mistakes. We can eliminate that.
Wow. Yeah, I mean, on, on the surface, it, it seems like it's a win-win on your side, on the customer's side. I think one of the things that was discussed the first time that you presented to mayor and council were some concerns from council members. And, and I'm not quite clear on this, and I, and I may be like some of the, the public out there and, and customers of HLD. I, I'm not quite understanding where the demarcation is between the service that HLD provides, the equipment that HLD provides, and then what the customer is responsible for. Is, is there a way, Nathan, to sort of sum that up?
Well, a picture is worth a thousand words. Like I said, this evening, we'll, we'll plan to put together an illustration. But I guess in, in terms of words, I, there's underground services and overhead services. Underground, so then both of them are treated a little bit differently. Underground services, the conduit will sweep up into the meter socket on the utility side. We own everything from the socket to the transformer.
Okay.
An overhead service is treated a little bit differently. Everything basically attached to the house or the structure is the customer's responsibility.
Okay.
We will come with our service conductor overhead attached to a, a house knob, and our conductors down and meet the customer's conductors, and there's, there's connection points there.
Okay.
That's, that's the line of demarcation. So the customer would own everything from that connection point down into their panel besides the, the meter itself.
And if, if someone wants to see what that looks like now, we have a customer requirements for electric service manual that's posted on our website. So if you go to hagerstownlight.org and go to electric service manual or customer requirements for electric service, there are diagrams in there based on exactly what Nathan was saying that are labeled as where that location is.
What do you anticipate being the hardest or most challenging part of this? I, I know you've sort of vetted this out now and talked to the vendor and things of that nature, but I mean, I mean, what, what are, what, what are the, the concerns, I guess, potentially going into this?
Obviously, we're, we're a customer-based operation, so we want to make sure our customers are happy.
Yeah.
And we're not interrupting their service for no reason. They will notice an interruption when we pull the old meter and put the new meter on. That'll literally be 30 seconds, if, if that. One thing that, to do our jobs correctly, we have to get the communications infrastructure installed. And that has to communicate properly, because if we're not getting the information from the meters, there's no reason for them to even be out there. We have to manage all of the data.
Yeah.
And make sure it all gets in the right place. And there's 18,000 meters, so procurement.
Yeah.
And is a whole nother. So it's, it's an extremely large project over X amount of time.
And I think we're going to be surprised as, as this project evolves, we'll be surprised with new challenges every day.
And, and that's why you're talking about doing a pilot program on this. What, what will that entail exactly? Do you have an idea of what that will entail at this point?
Well, that's putting in the base communication, the server to collect the data and some communication infrastructure to select a few meters.
Okay.
And just to make sure that the vendor is providing us the service that they promised.
Will, will you be doing a duplication at that point in time? Will, will they keep the meter that they have and then you'll be able to do another? Or, or will it be, will, will it be ultimately just using that new one and determining? Okay.
Right, that'll, that'll give us the base information that we'll need to, to do any, perform any troubleshooting to make it work better. And that, that infrastructure, as long as it works well.
Yeah.
Will remain. And then we'll just expand from there.
Yeah, I, I know infrastructure is, is never a, a very exciting topic for the public, but is crucial to something like electrical service to work, which is obviously, as you alluded to, Jason, exactly what the customer wants. Because they don't really care about, I mean, they certainly care about how much it costs, but they care about their service working. So when, when you, when you, when you drill down on that and, and you get to this point, I, I talked to Jim Bender last week about some infrastructure on, on his side of things, specifically talking about some of the, some of the traffic lights and, and things of that nature and, and the fact that they've, they've gotten pretty old. And I think that's part of what we're talking about here, kind of catching up on technology. How do you feel that the light department and the, the city in general has done as far as being where we are now? Because infrastructure is certainly a very expensive proposition, and, and this, this is, is no different.
We, we definitely got the life cycle out of our equipment that we currently have installed over the past 15 or 20 years since Nathan and I have been here. We have gradually started to upgrade those facilities. We were cautious with advanced metering infrastructure, because when it first became a hot topic, everybody wanted you to buy it, and they told you it was the greatest thing in the world. We didn't really buy into that. We wanted to let others use the system first, make sure it was good, and then we'd hop on board. Same with LED lighting. It was very expensive, it wasn't the greatest, they've really caught up with that. Now we're kind of on board with that too. So same goes for relays and substations, things like that, everything to improve service and get the next generation of equipment out in the field.
The, the price tag on this, I, I think when you look at it, I mean, certainly it's one that, that gets your attention, but that's just kind of where we are at this point. Wouldn't you say, Nathan?
Oh, absolutely. The, the cost of, the inflation on materials and equipment with utility infrastructure has, has gone up drastically since, well, since the pandemic. But there's, the, the bottom line of that, I, I believe there's some cost savings that can be, that can be made as we go through this process, but it's still, yes, it will still be a big number. It'll, it's the biggest project that, that we've taken on since we've been here. Purchasing transformers would be the second, that's, that's a million dollar project. That's just purchasing two pieces of equipment. This is 18,000 meters, X amount of collectors and equipment and, and a server. And there's, there's a lot involved here.
Yeah, yeah, but again, as you said, I, I think the, the benefits will be realized in a short period of time for the customer. I mean, not having to, to pick up the phone necessarily to make that call. You already being aware of that, the response time, everything that goes along with it. So again, circle back for me here on, on what the, what the proposed timeline is on this, Nathan.
So I believe, I don't have the papers in front of me, but I believe by the fall of '24.
The pilot project.
The pilot project should.
Okay.
Should end?
No, getting that, I think with fall '24, we'd be installing and starting to operate the pilot. And then the spring, work through that and start, start rollout in the spring of '24.
And, and depending on our funding, depending on what capital is available, the, the motion has left some, some room to, some wiggle room there where we could, we could increase or decrease our costs each year. We hope to be completed, fully completed by November of 2028. It could be done sooner if funding is available.
We're going to have assistants install the meters by the contractor to get going. And they're going to train our employees how to do that. So hopefully we can start taking over some of that workload. As our meter readers don't have to read meters, they can be installing meters.
Yeah.
And we can save on funding or save on money that way for more funding.
And I would just ask you one more thing from a customer's standpoint, and alluded to it a little bit earlier, and that's the, the customer being proactive as much as possible. So what, what's a, a good first step or two for a customer potentially to take at this time? Talked about directing them to the website, perhaps to take a look at some of that information. I know you're going to be putting out some educational information. Anything that they can do now or, or where should they be focusing their attention so that they're ready for this?
Well, they focus their ten, they, they go out, look at their meter socket. If it's rusty and in poor condition, they, they might want to call an electrician and, and have that looked at, get an opinion from, from a professional. There's the service entrance cable between the meter and the panel that they could look at, and the service entrance cable going up to the, the house knob as well. Anything, anything exposed to the weather will deteriorate over time. A lot of the, those service entrance cable conductors are just protected by sheathing. And that sheathing wears out, they'll start to see the, the neutral conductors, which are wrapped down through the whole length of the cable itself. Once you start to see that, that shiny neutral come through, that's, that's a pretty good indicator that, that they might want to reach out to an electrical contractor and, and have it taken care of.
I appreciate the information on this, guys. I think it's something that can be a little intimidating for the customer. I think based on the reaction of some of the council members the first time that you presented it, because I know that as staff, you do a lot of work behind the scenes, you vetted this out, and then you kind of put it out there, and, and you want that kind of feedback. But then that feedback, I, I think in, in that way, and, and you guys were able to go back and sort of quell some of those potential fears and, and certainly have a, a game plan going forward that I, I, I think is a little more, I guess, obvious at this point in where we're going with this. So continue to follow this. And again, certainly the, the website is a great resource. You guys do a great job with keeping customers updated on Facebook all the time with everything that's going on. So appreciate the communication, the information that you guys get out to the public on a daily basis. And we'll follow this project along the way. Good luck with it. I know it's a big one for you. And again, appreciate the time here on Council Rap.
Absolutely, thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Wes.
Yep, and thanks to all of you for watching. For now, that is a wrap. We'll see you next time on Council Rap.